Good evening and welcome to Millbury City Council special meeting agenda for April 11, 2023. This is on a closed session on property negotiations pursuant to government code and about price in terms of lease. So we will be adjourning to closed session.
Real quick, Mayor, roll call, please.
Roll call, right in front of me, thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Papin. Councilmember Cahalan.
I, present.
Councilmember Fung.
Here.
Vice Mayor Goodman. Mayor Schneider.
Present.
Three members of the city council are present. Councilmember Fung, excuse me, Councilmember Papin and Vice Mayor Goodman are not present.
And just for the record, Mayor, they are present, they're just not here at the dais right now, but they will be attending closed sessions, so we will have a full call.
Very good. So we will be adjourning to a room to discuss lease agreements and we will return at seven o'clock, see you at seven.
Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone, select from over 25 languages, click attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone. Select from over 25 languages. Click Attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen, relax, and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone. Select from over 25 languages. Click Attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax, and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience. Joining a translation session is fast and easy. Scan the wordly QR code with your phone. Select from over 25 languages. Click Attend and start reading the translated captions. You can also unmute your phone to listen to audio translations. Now sit back, relax, and enjoy a more inclusive and engaging experience.
Good evening, everyone. The city council is finishing up a closed session meeting, and they will be reconvening shortly. Thank you.